...participating quizzes. And my goal is when they, for every quiz, they often have to see their paper on the subject and they often have to respond to it. My goal is to be more aggressive. They are responding to the question, they're using the third chapter. And then I'm responding every single through the paper. And I'm kind of sure that we've out there. And also professionally giving advice.
This kind of all the way.
Right.
It's not that it's important or something?
Yeah. So throughout the class, we can talk about this. They're going to pick a location, a territory, and they can be booked. And they have to answer questions about how they've done how they've had better issues to study.
I agree.
So we're keeping that in mind before we start. The report started to check where we just moved down. Yes, I agree. Um, I think we're going to have to teach this class. And it's like, oh, great if I could take the same class for once because then I would have, you know, more experience than in front of me. It's like, it's like people. I don't know, but it doesn't sound like fun.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. All called order to the regular meeting of the Town of Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission on this Wednesday, September 5th, 2012. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Chad Fuller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, Approval of the Agenda, Vice Chairman.
Chairman, I move that we approve. The agenda is written.
Second.
I've got a motion by Vice Chairman Whitman, a second by Commissioner Bianchi, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Communications from Citizens. This time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under these circumstances? Okay, seen none. Move to administrative items. Administrative item number eight, Appointment of Chairman and Vice Chairman. This is the time where we, every year, I think we do it. We appoint the Chair and the Vice Chairman. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Whitman as the Chairman of the Town of Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I've got a first by myself, Chad Fuller, and a second by Commissioner Bridget Peterson, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Congratulations. Chairman Whitman.
Got some big shoes to fill.
All right, now we need a Vice Chairman.
Chairman? Chairman?
Commissioner Bianchi?
I would move that we kind of go old school with this one, and I would nominate Bridget Peterson for the role of Vice Chairwoman.
I second.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by now Chairman Whitman, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I should say, by old school, I don't mean age. I meant that.
Yeah, no, I know. I was.
She once served as our Chairman and Vice.
Ice cover, Tony.
Yeah, I was going to clarify that.
That may not have come out so well.
And then you can go ahead and fix that in the minutes next month.
Yeah.
You can make sure the minutes accurately reflect that.
I'll catch that.
Wonderful. Great. Well, thank you. I know Commissioner Whitman will, now Chairman Whitman, will do a fantastic job as the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next is, and Bridget, thank you so much for your willingness to serve as Vice Chairman. When I started on the commission, when we, the three of us started on the commission seven years ago, Bridget was the Chairman back then, so.
It's been a long time.
It's been a while, so it seems to happen, your opportunities to serve and help out will, you know, they always come back around. So thank you, Bridget, for doing it.
When you stay around as long as I do.
You're as old school as you are, Bridget. Next, Appointment of Zoning Hearing Officer and Alternate Zoning Hearing Officer.
Chairman, I'd be happy to stay zoning, or become zoning hearing officer. I've been serving as alternate under Jessica Sarkisian for the past two years, so I'd be happy to take the position of zoning hearing officer.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion?
I guess that was a motion by me.
Can you nominate yourself on that? Sure, all right. I've got a motion by Commissioner Peterson, a second by Vice Chairman Whitman, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Now we need an alternate zoning hearing officer.
Chairman?
Commissioner Bianchi?
I would nominate Commissioner Steiger to the alternate zoning hearing officer position.
Second.
Great, I've got a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Peterson, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Great, thank you for doing that. I did that before, and it's a, it's a very, I think it's very helpful to the town, and it's helpful to the commission as you get to see issues and kind of vet through them before. And Commissioner Steiger, just be ready, because there's times when ZHO cannot be there, and you need to just be able to jump in. So it's a great learning experience. I did it for, I think, a year and a half, maybe even two years, so.
That's what I was just going to say, even 12 years on the planning commission, I still feel like I learned stuff, and especially as ZHO.
Yeah, you really do. It's a really, it's a great way to help the town. So that's fantastic. All right, minutes. Agenda Item Number 10, Study Session Regular Meeting Minutes of the August 1st, 2012. Commissioner Bianchi?
I actually did have one change on page 14 of the regular meeting minutes. When it talks about the VA clinic will activate baseline, I think the phrase should probably be act as a baseline, and that was the only change that I found. So if there are no other changes, I would move for approval.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Vice Chairman Whitman, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed?
And abstain?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Because I wouldn't hear.
Okay, so we've got, the motion passes five-zero within Commissioner Steiger abstaining. Thank you, I almost didn't let you jump in there, Bob, thank you. All right, next, Public Hearing Consent. Consent Public Hearing Items Will Be Heard at One Public Hearing. After the Consent Public Hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion at the request of a commission, at the request of a member of the commission's staff. An item may be removed from consent calendar, may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. With that, I will open up the public hearing, introduce our consent calendar, which is, which are Agenda Items 11, which is S-12-03, 12, UP-12-05, 13, UP-12-04, and 14, UP-12-06. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on any of these items? Do I have, let's see. Let's see, we've got, hold on, let me go through, 12-05. All right, so we do have one. We do, we have Brad Olson. Is Brad here? Okay, Brad. Mr. Olson, come on down. If you could state the name, your name and municipality of residence, yep, right down there by the microphone, name, municipality of residence. And before we get started, let me just read into the minutes. Mr. Olson says he's in favor if issues are addressed and that he wishes to speak. And to be clear, this is on UP-12-05, which is a conditional use permit for approximately 1.12 acres of real property located at 1221 North Greenfield Road, to allow a banquet facility in the single-family 43 zoning district, subject to conditions. Go ahead, Mr. Olson.
Thank you. Chairman of the Board, Members of the Board, my name is Brad Olson. I live at 2599 East Houston Avenue along the dirt road that's described here. We are in favor of the site becoming a banquet hall, but we're concerned about safety along Houston Avenue. It's a small dirt road, it is an easement, and the approach to that dirt road is also very narrow. So what happens is, as you're coming up to turn onto Houston to get to our residences, if there's someone coming out of Houston, you can't turn in at the same time. So if there's a car, say, wanting to turn left out of Houston to go south on Greenfield, and you're coming north to turn right onto Houston, you're stopped in the middle of traffic waiting for that person to proceed, turn left, wait for other traffic to clear up. And I think, I think it presents a real hazard for us that use that thoroughfare every day to come and go from our residences. There have been a couple of events at the hall, and I've seen them attempt to get people to park in, there's also another approach at the parking lot for the church, but, you know, people are confused, it's dark, they just try to turn in wherever they can, and again, it just creates a bit of a hazard. So I'm not sure what I'm suggesting, other than maybe somehow widening that approach. If there's some way, we had heard some rumors that there was some talk of paving part of that dirt road. People that park in the parking lot then have to kind of cross a dirt road to get to the reception hall, so. Anyway, I hope I've been clear. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the Speaker? Okay, I just have a question, sir. So is there something specific that you're proposing that you'd like us to look at? I understand that you say that you think it's a hazard along the road. Do you have any specific suggestions that we could consider? That's part one of the question, and part two is, have you talked to staff about those questions before? So those are kind of the two parts.
To answer your second question, I haven't talked to staff.
Sure, okay. How about the applicant? Have you talked to the applicant about it? Okay.
No, just saw the.
And it's not needed, it's just a.
Saw the meeting notice up there and decided to come tonight.
100%, okay.
The suggestion is to widen the approach somehow, so that there can be a car leaving Houston and a car come in at the same time. That'd be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? I'm not sure the applicant has, I don't, is Houston, Houston's not a public street at that far, is it?
It is not.
So I don't know if the town would have any control, right?
It's an easement.
Okay, great, thank you. Kyle, I'm not quite sure who, I'm getting back to the agenda. Who's the planner on this? Al, Al, would you like to address that, if you would, please, sir?
Mr. Chairman and Members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to show you the aerial for, for the site, and maybe we can discuss a little bit. This is the site here with a blue roof building, Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church of the South. Houston is actually a private access easement that runs between the two. It's not a registered road, it's, provides access to properties further to the east. And I believe it's only 20 feet wide, so there's a couple of different things that, with the speaker that came to our mind. First of all, primary access would be to the site would, will be an upgraded approach at this location with parking on the site. Secondly, there's a shared parking access agreement with the, with the Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church of the South. So the primary places to enter and exit the site would be at these two established locations or upgraded locations. There's a couple of things that the applicant could do. He could provide information along with other information related to the use of his facility to use either of these two driveways exclusively. And secondly, he can also provide an adequate signage on, on his site to say that this is the entrance to this location. As far as the widening the approach, I really couldn't any, commit the town to anything like that, but it's something that can be considered.
Right, sure, and I'm not even sure we could commit the applicant to that, because it's probably owned by, in proportion to share with all the people downstream, who act, down road, who access that. Al, is it, is there secondary access off that, can you access the Spirit of Joy site off of that, off of Houston? Is there any access off of Houston to either of those two sites? It doesn't?
Yes, yes, there is. There's an access here, it looks like a, maybe even a garbage truck or something right there. There's an access coming in here, and that'll be improved a little bit to make it bigger. And then on the site plan of the projects itself, you can see there's going to be new access to allow connection between the banquet facility and the church.
Wonderful. All right, you know, that might be something to consider, have a sign or something up that's a primary access.
Can they, can Al put that previous slide up?
Can you put that previous slide up, Al?
The site plan.
Houston is an access. Do you want us to?
What's that?
Do they have permission to use Houston?
That's between, that's the private easement that they'd have to work out. Okay, is there, are there other folks who would like to speak on this? And if so, I don't have any other blue cards, so, okay, wonderful. No, what I'd love you to do, ma'am, is if you could just speak first and then promise to fill out a blue card and hand it to the gentleman in the green shirt up here at the end, that would be great. So come on up to the microphone, and just a reminder to state your name and municipality of residence, for the record, please.
All right, my name is Julie Turley, and I live at 2697 East Houston Avenue. I'm the first house on the other end of the road.
Okay.
And I wasn't planning on speaking. This is really frustrating for me. Number one, I have nothing against people doing receptions that are, but if any of you guys try to drive into your own driveway, that space right there that you go in and off the road isn't even as wide as your driveway. You can't get two cars in and out right there. So if you have a car turning right onto Houston Avenue going north on Greenfield, they have to stop if a car's right there to get out. So it's, it's dangerous. And there's a big water irrigation thing right there, so you have like a big hole that you hit, so you have to like come to a dead stop to go in or out right there, to miss it. Just yesterday, my neighbor opened up a school in her house next door to me. I've got 60 students at her house, which is another issue that I'm combating right now. And so adding more traffic, when Challenger Basic School has already expanded twice, I don't feel like I live in a neighborhood anymore. I'm livid right now. I just can't even think of adding more traffic into something that we can't even access. On top of that, we're on a dirt road, traffic comes in there, all that dust comes flying through. We've been there since we've been annexed to city, the Gilbert, the City of Gilbert has not paved Desert Lane, which is our main access road, since we've lived there and been annexed. I've been there for 12 years. So there's a lot of things that are compiling up on my mind right now. I have no problem with the reception center going in there as long as the city is willing to work with us and make it functional. And right now, it's not functional.
Ma'am, thank you. If I could ask you, when you say, ma'am, if you could just, hold on one sec. If you could say, if the town would make it functional for you, what exactly are you looking for, from an access, from reducing car trips?
Me, a functional thoroughfare would be to pave our road and widen that, that entrance right there. When they say that people are not going to use that, we have no control over what drivers do. We've experienced this. So if the City of Gilbert would make that entrance going in on Houston Avenue off of Greenfield Road, wide enough for two cars to go in and out right there, and pave that whole road all the way down, then it would be, to me, a functional road.
Right. Now, ma'am, if I could say, and I don't know, but I believe that that is not a town road.
It's a private, it's a private easement. When we were annexed, we were told that private easements were not going to be paved, so we knew that. But my frustration is, as a taxpaying citizen, is that we went to the town meetings when Challenger proposed being expanded twice, and every single resident in that neighborhood opposed it, but yet it went through. So now we have another thing coming up on the board, you know, and if this goes through, I feel like what rights do we have as homeowners in this area? These are our two only accesses, in and out of our neighborhood.
Okay, and just, I can't really speak to what happened in a previous meeting, because I don't know, but from what's in front of us today, I just want to be clear that the town couldn't pave that road, I believe, even if the town wanted to. The town doesn't own the road. If the town started to pave it, it would be a trespass. So everybody who's got an ownership interest in that road would have to convey to the town that road, and without looking at your private documents, which is beyond the scope of this meeting, I couldn't tell, I mean, I imagine, given the number of people there, that would be quite a few people that would have to consent to that, and then the town would have to consent to do it as well.
Nobody would oppose having that road.
Right. And whether that's true or not, ma'am, I.
But no, but even if they paved it up to a certain part, and if we could close the gates that we initially had there, so that it's not, you know, so that cars aren't coming through there, I don't know, but I just, you know.
I guess my point, ma'am, would be, the ball would really be in your guys' court to go to the town and say, hey, look, we've got signatures from everybody, and I don't even know if this is possible, and this is somewhat beyond the scope, but it's, I think the ball would be in your court to say, hey, look, all the owners of this road would like you to do this. I'm not sure that's something the town would do on the initiative without the, without the owner saying, this is something we would like you to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it has, and it's been talked about, as all the homeowners on the street. We would all love that, but we were just told that the city wouldn't do it, so we just, or the town, so we just never bothered to do it.
Sure.
And then when these things arise, then that comes, the issue comes up.
Yeah, and then just for purposes of, the use permit we're discussing here tonight, it's impossible for us to stipulate to the applicant, whoever he is, or she is, I don't know personally if they're here tonight, but it'd be impossible for us to stipulate that you paved that road, because they don't have any right to pave it. And we can't obligate the town to do it, because the town doesn't have any right to do it. I just want to make sure that you understand that.
I do.
Our hands are tied, because that's not anything that is owned by the town.
I guess my next question would be, is how often do they plan on doing receptions? And what's their capacity number that they have, that they'll fill in there, so that we have an idea of what?
Sure.
What the car flow will be, and when these things will take place.
Yeah, I think so. You know what, we will ask the applicant. So it's capacity, and what was your other question, ma'am?
And the nights of, is it like a Monday, Saturday, Sunday through Sunday, their nights of operation?
Okay, night, days and night, days and hours of operation.
Hours of operation, yeah.
How's that? Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You bet. No, I think we can probably keep going. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this matter? Ma'am, don't forget to fill out a blue card and bring it up to the gentleman in the green shirt. Is the applicant here? Sir, if you would, oh, hold on one second, sir. Did you wish to speak, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I'm going to go. This is new information to us.
Oh, come on down, ma'am, yeah. So if you would just state your name, and you don't need to give me your address, just whether you live in the Town of Gilbert, or the City of Mesa, or.
Marcy Olson. I do live down the road from this. Again, I love the reception center idea. Big, exciting things going on down there. However, let me just go over here and point, so you know what I'm talking about?
That's fine, don't say anything, because we can't hear you without, all right, so we got that area there. Okay, gotcha.
That's probably our biggest, ah, because that is leading to our road in discussion. When they say this is a 20-foot road, they're, 20 feet, where? I mean, maybe going into the church parking lot, it's 20 feet. It's 20 feet if I hit the bushes over here on this side. It's not 20 feet. We keep saying over and over, paving, to me, is the second most important thing that's going on here. Here's what's going to happen. If that, and we've said it before, the approach, it's not, I don't even think it's 10 feet. Here's what, here's the problem with the approach. It's not just that it's narrow, it's death on either side. You're either going to hit a telephone pole, or you're going to go down into a ditch. And it's happened so many times. I'm talking about danger on Greenfield Road, not Houston. Houston is not the problem. You're at, you're at a stop on Houston. People coming down Greenfield Road, if they have to turn in there and there's a car coming out, it's stopping traffic, and it's really dangerous. The what's going on at the reception, we've only had about four events, maybe, that I can remember, but every time it's been at night, obviously, there's no lighting around there, nobody knows where they're going. People are slowing down, we, you know, it's like, we just want to go into our house. Also, people crossing up, as they leave the reception center to go over to the church parking lot, it's pitch dark, and we're just driving home, and they come out of bushes. I mean, I'm sure that's going to get changed, because it looks like that, but anyway, right now, it's like scary. I've hit so many kids, you know, families come to these receptions, kids are crossing the road right in front of me, and I'm only going 10, 15 miles an hour, it's a dirt road. But yet, if there's no, you know, I don't know when someone's going to dart out in front of me, it's just really scary right there. But my biggest thing is the approach from Houston. That's got to be something that they've got to address. There's absolutely, we can't have any more traffic on that road. Whether they say, oh, they're only going to access on their property or the church's property, they're right here accessing our road. That's what this little thing is leading to. So obviously, there's going to be traffic going to, in and out of that road, and the approach is not changing. I don't see anything on the plan to show that the approach is going to change. So that's my biggest concern. It's a huge safety issue, and it's a, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen for the Town of Gilbert, if this is revenue that's going to the Town of Gilbert. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the Speaker? Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? All right, seen none. Sir, if the applicant, you don't have to, if you'd like to make a presentation, and just a couple of questions I would imagine you'd like to answer, and then Al will probably ask you to back clean up on this afterwards.
Okay, my name is Dennis Elliott, and I'm a half-owner in the property that we're talking about here, 1221 Greenfield. Excuse me. I understand what the previous speakers are concerned about and what their issues are. I actually think that many of their concerns are valid. However, that property belongs to the Spirit of Joy Church. As you eloquently stated, I have no right to do anything with that property without the church's approval, okay? And I've gone through a little bit of the history here. There's evidently been a number of meetings where people have asked to get that area paved. It is dirt, it throws dust over on my property. I don't care for that. Some of the people that use that are skidding tires going in and out of there. I've yelled at a couple of them, and they slowed down. However, there's nothing I can do with that. My property, where I have to show the entrance on this drawing, the entrance from Greenfield, which is in the lower left-hand corner, and the entrance to the church property, I made both of those to comply with the city asked me to do. Excuse me. And all I'm really trying to do is make it safe and easy for people to get in and out of my property. I have already put lights up at the lower left-hand corner. They're English-looking lights, they're decorative. I've also put lights on the trees in front of the property, so that as people come by and they see the event venue, they're going to go, oh, there it is. So it isn't dark, it isn't dark that you can't see. I agree that trying to get out on Houston is an issue from a safety perspective, and I measured that, and my measurement said it was 23 feet wide, okay? The other entrance that we use is on the church itself, which is about, almost double that. And we put a sign up for every event that says, parking here. We have a parking attendant, and he guides the traffic. So quite frankly, I don't know what more that we can do. I would like to see the area paved also, but I don't think I can do that.
Sir, I think one of the speakers had a couple of questions on capacity and your anticipated hours of operation, and could you discuss that?
Yes, in my briefing.
Or did you want to respond to that?
In the application, there's a briefing, I did a PowerPoint briefing, and I talked about the hours of operation. And it's 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and 10:00 PM and later is quiet time, and that's on Fridays and Saturdays. I have an agreement with the church, which is an easement with the church, that says they have the right to use my parking area on Sundays and on Wednesdays. So we will plan on being in operation primarily on Fridays and Saturdays from 10 to 10, and occasionally during the week, as an event comes up, like a birthday party, that sort of thing. That's what's in my briefing to the city, and it's what we're committed to.
Capacity, sir, did you want to discuss capacity?
Capacity is not defined at this point in time. We have approximately 95 total parking places. We had to pay for an engineer to do a traffic and parking study and they came back and said four people per car times the amount of available parking. So it could be up to 400 or so. I expect and anticipate that the majority of the events are going to be somewhere between 100 to 200. We have had three family-related events. We have had 400 people there on two different occasions. We had 300 people on another occasion. Didn't seem to bother anybody. It seemed to work very well.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Oh, Commissioner Ayler?
On the design of the new driveway, did you look at taking, since you're building the new parking lot, along, further away from the actual Houston, since you're so close to Houston?
Well, there's an existing drive there now and I'm planning on enlarging that as opposed to going and doing a whole new drive and then closing that off. And the city planning department seemed to feel this was good. I coordinated with your fire people and your planning department. Everyone seemed to think that it was fine that we were doing it.
But were they taking into consideration of the neighborhood when you were talking about it?
I'm sure they were. In dealing with the city, I find they take into consideration everything.
Well, yeah, I know. And then what's the other access point that's going south?
It's not on this slide. It's the church's entrance point, maybe. Al, can you bring up your church one? Yeah, I don't know how I point to it for you. See where the words "Spirit" and "Joy" are?
Yeah.
Immediately to the west, to the left of those words, I believe, can't really tell for sure, but I believe that's where the entrance point is and it's a full-size driveway, two cars pass each other with extra space. We have actually negotiated with the church and they have agreed to have us put a sign up there for every time we have an event. And right on it, it says "Event," I believe the last one said "Wedding Reception." And we have a parking attendant that stands right there with a flashlight, motioning people in and giving them directions where they can park. I'm sorry, could you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Chairman.
Commissioner Peterson?
You mentioned, as you were speaking, you said that the Spirit of Joy Church owns that property. Were you referring to that section of Houston specifically or do they own a share of it like the rest of the homeowners down Houston?
I have been told. I have not verified it by county records or city records, but I have been told by the church that they own that entire property. There's been discussions in the past with the other neighbors and I understand their issues and their concerns. With the church, there was at one point, everyone trying to get together so they could pave that Houston access, but the church took the position that gee, you guys are using my land, so you get to pay for it and no one would come up with the money. I was told that by the church. So I have hearsay, but I believe that our entire property belongs to the Spirit of Joy.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Al, before I, is there anybody that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak on this? Okay. Okay, ma'am, Al, I'll let you, ma'am, come on down. That's fine. Want to make sure everybody's heard. If you could just state your name and whether you live in the town of Gilbert or the town of Queen Cracker.
My name is Natalie Perry and I live in Gilbert on Houston Avenue. We just live a couple of houses down. This is just regarding the lighting issue. I have to say with the other residents, we all agree that the lighting is not sufficient at all. We actually had a dangerous encounter. There was somebody leaving an event and in evening it was dark out and there's bushes. Can I go point to them really quick and I'll just show you?
Sure.
Do we have a lighter pointer for them? No?
There is a little, a little gate or exit right there from the event site. And we were coming in on Houston, heading east on Houston, and some girl, an adult, just walked right across the street, just started. And that's how short that road is that if you take one step outside their property, you are in the dirt road. And my husband had to slam on his brakes. He's sitting right back there. He had to slam on his brakes so that we wouldn't hit this girl. It was late at night. I feel like the lighting was not sufficient and for the road to be that small, somebody leaving an event, they have, what if it was a child? You know, what if, you know, there's no room, there's no sidewalk, there's nothing like that where you can say, okay, let's just, let's be safe, you know, it's, you step right outside that event and you are in traffic. So.
Great. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Al, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, again, I believe that it's, it is a 20-foot-wide access easement and it's own, the way I normally understand it, it's an access easement provided all the way along here, all the residents that have that located on their property. And it's essentially owned by each of the individual owners with an easement placed on there, allowing access from every other person up and down, which would be a reciprocal agreement. The applicant has indicated he's willing to provide additional lighting, signage as necessary. The church has, church parking lot has lighting. I don't know if there's an opportunity for that to be on during the banquet facility events, but that's something that could be looked at as well. I don't really think I have anything else I can add. I'd be pleased to answer your questions. Thank you.
Hey. I'm sorry, go ahead. Jennifer?
I'm told those lights are on every night. The parking lot lights located in the Spirit of Joy.
Okay. And when you said, well, here, I'll go, is there, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Whitman?
So when looking at the site plan, it looks like there's three driveway entrances within, do we even have a measurement of how close those entrances are? It looks like we have the church ingress egress on the south side, we have Houston, and then we have the ingress egress proposed for the barn. Is that correct? It just seems like if we were reviewing a brand-new case, that we wouldn't allow ingress egress so close to one another for potential future traffic conflicts. Is there a way that we can space some of those driveways out a little bit? It seems like there might be room for access on the northern side of the barn property to connect to those parking spaces, something to at least give a little more breathing room between those turning movements because it does seem like it's going to be pretty congested, especially with the potential for these large-scale events.
Commissioner Whitman, this is an existing access, a dislocation, as we mentioned, Houston here and then the site access, a dislocation, also an existing situation. The frontage of the site's 175 feet, so you can see this distance here would probably be something like maybe 120 feet between these two driveways, the banquet facility site and the Spirit of Joy site, just guessing, maybe a bit more. The Houston Avenue, or Houston alignment is certainly in the middle of the two. It has been looked at by our transportation people. They didn't really have too much concern. I believe you're suggesting the possibility of relocating this driveway further north on the property?
Or maybe just even adding another exit point so that there's kind of a circular drive from entering the site to exiting the site, if that makes sense, so that if somebody were to pull in from the southerly driveway and enter into the site and park based on the site plan, that they could then exit on the north end versus having to turn back and just having all that congestion coming in and out of one particular driveway.
Certainly a point worth considering.
It just seems like we're, they're definitely asking to increase the use and potential traffic at that, at that location and therefore, we need to figure out a way to make it work with what's existing or not.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has a comment on the circular driveway.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we just hold off on that until we get, we go through some more questions? Are there other questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi, Commissioner Peterson, did you?
I don't know if it's so much of a question as a comment, Al. On the exhibit that you have in our packet attachment, if I can shrink this down, I can tell you. It's page nine in our packet. It's handwritten, page nine in our packet. It shows a bunch of landscape around the new proposed entrance to the banquet facility that enters onto Houston so that the people parking, that one right there on the bottom, that you can park in the Spirit of Joy parking lot so they can enter and exit either way and cross Houston. I would suggest no landscaping on the west side of that driveway. I think that you need to keep that area as wide open as you can so that people can see. Right now, and I know this is probably just draft, it hasn't been to D.R. or anything, but there are a couple bushes or trees drawn in there and I would suggest, no, over here next to the driveway that goes onto Houston, right there to the left, right there, yeah, no, right there. I would suggest nothing there because it will open up the view from that entrance going into that property, crossing over onto Houston. I think anything that we can do to keep that view obscured would be, you know, to the benefit of everybody there. I know we can't do much about paving that street especially, or that road, especially if that section belongs to the church and they don't want to pay for that because unfortunately, that's the situation it would come down to.
Commissioner Peterson, staff can certainly work with the applicant to make sure that there's good visibility or maximizing opportunities for visibility. If that, if that is as an issue, then I'm sure that the staff would be willing to work with the applicant and vice versa.
Because it sounds like right now there's bushes there and the people are just walking across because they're parking at the church. If we're definitely opening that up for cars to cross back and forth and for people we know will be crossing back and forth, let's open it up as much as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Steiger, please.
Al, the comments from the neighbors really highlight something, that there's an elephant in the room that's silent and that is the church. There, even though the applicant has the property and has, what it feels like to me is that there's an existing problem there and in isolation, this may be, appear to be satisfactory, but it's worsening an already bad situation. And as Commissioner Whitman pointed out, putting three exits, excuse me, three access points to Greenfield so close together, I think there could be a better solution if the church was at the table, talking to both the applicant and the neighbors and determining, hey, what can we do together to solve this? And it's got to be a give and take. So I'd just like to see the elephant that's not in the room, in the room, and I'd like to see all of them come up with a solution that instead of taking an existing problem and making it worse for some of the stakeholders, I'd like to see it be a much, much more elegant, safer solution for all of the stakeholders.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Steiger. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Al, I'm not sure, maybe for the applicant. It says on the east side of Greenfield Road, is there a sidewalk there? Is Greenfield improved so that there is a concrete sidewalk on the east side there or is it not improved? Does the applicant potentially know? It's on the site plan here. It says, it says existing sidewalk, but I don't know if that's gravel or if that's a improved concrete.
When you're talking about the east side, the east side is, to me, is behind the barn. Are you talking about the west side next to the Greenfield Road?
I'm sorry, the east side of Greenfield Road where there would be a sidewalk if it was fully improved.
There is a sidewalk.
Because I think, as we have these discussions, it seems like when we're talking about circulation and people crossing Houston, it almost seems if he's got traffic control there, I mean, if they can route people on an existing sidewalk to cross Houston and you've got, well, you're laughing.
That'll never happen.
Well, what I'm saying is if we're talking about lighting or whatever, we've got the parking you need at the church, you've got parking you need on-site, and if you can, if you can guide people along, that's why it's a use permit, you know? If it's not, if it's being violated, then we have to look at it again. But, you know, like we had talked about, there's got to be a solution here. Folks are saying, we're not opposed to the use. If we can negate the way or cut off the circulation for Houston, whether that be put barricades up to that secondary access point to Spirit of Joy or to their property so you force that traffic either into his property or Spirit of Joy and cut off the access to Houston, are you talking for emergency purposes?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but there's got to be a solution here. And if there's already existing sidewalk for folks to walk in instead of having to cut across a dirt road with traffic concerns, I'm not sure. I mean, it seems like the solution, it seems like the solution's there. Yes, please, sir.
I think I can clarify some of the things, like the one lady that spoke was talking about an entrance where a woman, I guess, walked out and her husband had to hit his brakes. Let me point out where that is because I doubt you're seeing it. Okay, what that is, right there at the edge of those trees, is a people gate, okay? It's about 36 to 40 inches wide with some steps going down. And what we did was that gate, it was in existence and what we thought was, gee, it would be easy to use that gate from the parking lot to get into the barn area, okay? And that's why you see people crossing Houston right there. What we could do is lock that gate and have the participants walking all the way down the driveway, across the sidewalk, because then they're on, actually on public land, over to the church parking lot and walking in. That would take care of that particular issue that that one, one of my neighbors has, I believe, okay? The lighting in that area, we put up a light there also to identify that the gate was there, figuring that that would, you know, help everybody. There's bushes on the other side of those trees headed east and they're, it's thick bushes, you can't see past it, nor do we want anybody to see past it, just looking into the yard. But coming out that gate, I would agree, that could be a dangerous issue. So we could lock that gate, force everybody to go down through the driveway. Now, if we put the second driveway in as that last picture showed, where we're widening the driveway coming into the Houston access, we're putting that in there for emergency vehicles. That's the reason it's going in, okay, to satisfy city need. If we didn't put that in and just had people come through the driveway, either walking, parking in the church, walking around on the sidewalk, coming up the driveway, that would work for us. It's not as handy for us as this, but it would work. So that would mean that I have to close off that for emergency access. We could probably work with the city staff to figure out another way to do that, but if what we're really trying to do is stop traffic going across the Houston easement, that would be one way of doing it. And I'd be more than willing to work with the city to solve that issue.
And I guess that's my point, is we've got an existing sidewalk, we've got an improved street, so theoretically, there should be streetlights there that offer a lighting possibility there, which increases the safety factor. If you can just control the access across Houston, I think that addresses a lot of the concerns. We talk about public safety access, but we allow crash gates and so forth like that. So if you just put up a barricade just to keep people from coming and going, I mean, public safety could get in there if needed. I don't know if that's outside our purview, but that's kind of where I'm coming down on it.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Okay, sir. Yeah, we kind of had the last call, but if you want to come down, if you're interested, if you've got something to say that hasn't been said before, we'd be happy to hear from you. So if you're just going to reiterate what we've heard before, then I think we've got a pretty good handle on it, but if you have some new information, we'd be happy to hear it.
No, I'm sorry. I had my hand up, but.
Oh, I'm, I must have missed it. I didn't have a card for you, so if you could just state your name and which town, I imagine you live with your wife in the, down the street.
Yes, Natalie Perry. I'm from Gilbert. I live up the street. And so I think that that would be very helpful to have, to restrict access a little bit to that gate because that is where the primary point at which we've had some problems. And one of the other issues at that point is that the property, and it hasn't been addressed, is that the property kind of drops down at that site compared to, say, the level of the road and the level of the Spirit of Joy is all kind of on, in the same plane. And then on the site, it kind of drops down and so also, you don't see people because they're lower. And so as they walk up onto the road, they like come out of nowhere. So.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right. Thank you, sir. This is going to be the last call. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak on this? All right. Seeing none. Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Keep in mind, we're still in our, I did not envision our, because I only had one blue card, so I did not envision our consent calendar going so long.
No.
But, well, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. All right. So does anybody want to have any comments on this?
Commissioner.
Sorry. Commissioner Vice Chairman Whitman?
Chairman, I'm a little, I guess I'll just start with some initial comments. I think that there's enough confusion and unknowns about this particular site and how it would work best, that I think that maybe it's something that the applicant and staff and maybe the church and neighbors should get together and commiserate on a best practice plan for this particular site and its uses and then maybe bring it back next month with a cohesive plan with everybody together. I mean, I think there's enough unknowns and some opposition out there to the use. And while personally, I feel that the use may be appropriate, I think the ancillary effects from the use are not and they're not going to work potentially, in my opinion, well at this site unless some of these issues are addressed. And so my personal opinion is I'd like to see it come back where it's a little more cohesive, there's not this opposition, maybe there's some answers to some unknowns that we don't have right now, specifically the church. There may be even a potential of getting some of these residents together and maybe some, my initial thought on a potential solution, which obviously is up to you and the town and the residents, is potentially getting the neighbors together to dedicate or give that portion of the roadway to the town and then have you, just have one access point, widen that driveway and all the traffic could then funnel in there and you can have your access off of the north side of Houston. That way, you're essentially making one entrance point versus two. That might solve some of the traffic issues, but again, it's going to require a lot of work on a lot of parties and an agreement there, too. So that's just my recommendation. I just feel there's, there's too much unknown right now and there's a little hesitation I just feel there's, there's too much unknown right now, and there's a little hesitation. And with the use permit, there's four standards that we need to meet, and I don't feel that we can meet them right now.
No, ma'am, we've closed the public hearing. Are there any other, Commissioner Steiger?
That was well said, and you covered a lot of ground there. Most important was your closing statement about the four conditions that we have to find for a use permit. And I agree with you that there are some unintended consequences for a well-planned use here, and those unintended consequences could be best addressed through continuing it and allowing the neighbors, the church, and the applicant, and the town staff to get together to address the existing problems that all of them have a share in solving, as well as mitigating the unintended consequences of granting this use permit.
Well said. Okay. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Ayler?
I'm in full agreement, but I just think right now, we're, we're having issues with how we're ingressing and egressing this site. One thing for us to look back at is, when you're looking at your plan, if we can incorporate maybe just a partial portion of the church on one of your exhibits, so we can see actually how this driveway, Houston, and the other point of the Spirit of Joy, it's church, so we can look at it globally of what we're looking at, so we're not just guessing on some of this stuff. So that's it.
So am I hearing that, it seems that the majority of the commission is, well, that's three, so is the thought then to continue this matter for, to the next regularly scheduled meeting, or the next meeting, which would be the October meeting? Is that kind of what you guys are thinking? Okay. Commissioner Steiger?
I think out of, in acknowledgement of both the applicant and the money and time that they've spent, I think that's a great way to nonetheless allow an improved, an approved, improved application get to us, and we'll allow staff and the applicant to determine if they can get all that done in 30 days or not.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm getting the sense that if we were to vote on this tonight, given the three of you, it would be, it would not pass as presented to us tonight. So I understand that your thought process, hey, let's not, let's not do that. It sounds like the support of the community is there if some, some issues can be addressed, and it may be as simple as, I don't know, I hate to dictate to them what, what it is that they need to do, but I would imagine it's something is, it could be fairly simple. The gate issue was one thing that was already resolved, the lighting could be thing, could be something. So there's a couple of issues there that I think, just to get everybody on the same page. Were there any additional comments or thoughts from Commissioner Bianchi or Commissioner Peterson? Did you have anything additional you wish to add? Tony?
Overall, I would agree. I think the solution is there. I think it's just a matter of the applicant meeting with the residents. I, I think the solution's there, as I've said in my agreement, I wouldn't say argument or my discussion. I mean, I've got a bit of a vested interest in this, because I live just on the other side of Voyager there, so when there's an event on a Saturday or Friday night, you know, and I'm coming and going there, it'll be interesting for me to see how the parking and the ingress and egress is going, too, because it could impact folks across the way as well. But like I said, I think the solution's there. I think that they just need to get everybody on the same page, and if the rest of the commission is comfortable with continuing it a month, then, then I would support that.
So I think that the admonition then, or the thought would be that the applicant and the neighbors and staff get together. I would, I would ask the, the neighbors who were such an important part of the process here tonight to continue to be an important part of that process with the applicant. The applicant's put a lot of time and money into this, and I think we're, we're very close, so if you could participate in that process over the next 30 days or so, and get with the applicant and staff to make sure that your concerns are heard and that a reasonable solution to this is met. Because I, I didn't get the sense from anybody that they say, look, this is a terrible use. You know, we don't want this at all. I didn't get that sense at all. I thought, what, the sense I got is, hey, this is a great use, we just have some tweaks we'd like, we'd like to some concerns. And, you know, and I would hope that the neighbors, I didn't get the sense they would do this, would say, look, we want the whole thing paved, and I don't think they're looking at this as a, hey, let's hold the applicant hostage on this, at all. They've got some legitimate concerns, and I would ask you to come and address those with the applicant and staff, and work out a reasonable solution that can be presented to us next month. Commissioner Bianchi?
I guess one question I would have is, if the use permit is not granted tonight, does that put in jeopardy any events that the applicant may have planned in the next 30 days before public hearing? Can they still go about holding those, or no?
Chairman Fuller, Commissioner Bianchi, not until the use permit is, is approved. Until that point in time, there is no use permit approved for the use on that property.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only alternative, Commissioner Bianchi, for us to vote on it as is right now, which I think would be denied, or to try and craft from the dais stipulations that we feel would address the neighbor's concerns and be acceptable to the applicant, and that's just a wildly inefficient process. It's much better when they bring something to us, it's, that's been hashed out between themselves, staff, and the neighbors, and it's something that everybody can stand behind, and then we can look at. And maybe next month, they can't come to a consensus, and we'll just have to vote on it as is. But I think it, it's prudent to give them time to come up with a, a plan that addresses as many of the neighbor's concerns as possible. So having said that, Phyllis, I don't know if, now this is part of the consent, ma'am, we closed the public hearing on this item, we had last call twice for comments. I don't know, Phyllis, do we have, since we're still on our consent public hearing, should we, what do we do here? Because we don't have any comments on the other consent gen items. What was your recommendation to be, to deal with a specific item?
Okay, you're not in the public hearing, you're, you closed the public hearing.
I'm sorry, in the consent calendar, I meant to say, right.
Right. So I would think that the motion would be to approve consent items, what is it, eight?
Tony, listen to this, because you're going to be making a motion.
Eleven, thirteen, and fourteen as presented, and to approve a continuance of item number 12, U.P. 1205, to the October 3rd Planning Commission meeting.
You got it. Okay. I'm ready to entertain a motion. Commissioner Bianchi?
Then I would move to approve the consent calendar as explained by our legal counsel. Is that a good comment?
Oh, pass the buck.
Yeah, that works?
Good job, good job. I will second that.
Okay. She's a team player, she's on board.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Peterson, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Thank you for the residents. Just so you know, residents, this has been continued to October hearing, so they'll give you a month to meet with the town, and then we'll, if the applicant decides to bring this back to us at the October meeting, we'll be hearing on it again at the October meeting. So if you have additional comments, please come back and address us at that point as well.
Chairman Fuller, if you could also remind them to give us the slips.
Oh.
That'll be one way we can get ahold of them for these meetings.
Yeah, so if you promised to fill out a slip, and you did not, please fill out a slip and give it to the, the nice gentleman in the green shirt. All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our public hearing non-consent portion of our agenda. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing, and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearing, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment, hold on. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. Our first agenda item is U.P. 12-03, a conditional use permit for McDonald's restaurant, approximately 1.57 acres of real property located at 3840 South Higley, Higley Road, to allow a limited service restaurant with extended hours of operation in an NC zoning district with a PAD overlay. Zoning district subject to conditions provide buffering and mitigate impacts on adjoining residential areas. With that, I will open the public hearing and introduce our planner on this, who is, is it Nathan?
Al.
Al? Okay, I saw Nathan stand up when I started. The iPad is not swift enough for me to move in between agenda items, or I'm not, I'm not adept enough at it, so.
Not swift enough.
I'm not swift enough. So Al, I think, I think I introduced Al. I, Al, I will maybe steal a little bit of your thunder. I heard the, the applicant is, desires to continue this item to the next available meeting, which would be October. If that's the case, I'm not sure we'll need a presentation on this, but my thought would be, there are some, if anybody here from, if anybody is here from the public, we'd certainly like to hear from them, because they may not be able to make it to the October meeting, so if they've come down for this, we'd certainly like to get their comments into the record. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong on any of my assumptions I just made, Al.
Chairman Fuller, you are correct. The applicant is prepared to continue this for one month. Try to, try to address some of the issues that have arose on the, on the case.
Wonderful. Okay, well then, unless any members of the commission feel differently, where did Commissioner Steiger go? Is he here? No? Okay, well, unless any members of the commission would like a presentation, I think we would just forego the presentation at this point. Is that okay with you?
I'm fine with that, I've already had a presentation.
Oh, I guess you have.
They do a great job, but I'm not going to make them do it again.
Okay. Anybody would like a presentation on this? Okay, well then, we'll skip the presentation. I only have one public comment form, and that is from Donna Holme. Did I say that wrong? I'm sure I did, and you can correct me when I, come on, we'd love to hear from you. She says, I'm opposed to this item, and I wish to speak. If there's anybody else that'd like to speak, before you start, ma'am, please fill out a blue comment form and drop it off here at the front. Ma'am, we'd be happy to hear your comments tonight. If you'd like to reserve those comments and come back next month, we'd be happy to listen to them. At that point, it's entirely up to you whether you'd like to comment tonight or next month.
Well, since I'm here, I'd like to go ahead tonight.
That's 100% okay. Yep, that's 100% okay. So if you could just state your name and municipality of residence for the record, and then take it away.
Yes, I am Donna Hume, and I live in Gilbert, 85297. And as you look at the site map, you can't really see where it is. So where I live is north of the site, and then as you go into Stratland Estates, there's like a double boulevard, and it leads directly to the lake. And I live by that area, so I'm beyond the 300-foot notification area. And I just found out about this this past weekend, as I was driving south on Higley, and went, much to your comment on the last one, that's a terrible idea! And the reason I think that is, as I look over the, the report, most of the items have been addressed. It's too intensive a use for the size of the parcel. There's a lack of buffering. I looked around at some other fast food places after I read this, and I noticed that most of them in the city of Gilbert are either buffered by a little commercial, say, an exercise gym, or little shops or offices, or there's a lot of vegetation, not just six feet of it. Again, they've done a wonderful job in their, in their report of the traffic ingress and egress, but the fact of the matter is, as one who lives there and watches the traffic on Higley as we try to get out of Melrose, it is, it is intense, and especially during rush hour. And with the bridges being approved, which is further south on Higley, that will just increase the traffic on Higley. And as many residents have pointed out, it just increases the potential for mishaps. I guess my main concern is the impact on the lake. And McDonald's is a wonderful restaurant for a lot of people, teenagers especially seem to enjoy it. And my concern with that is, even now, without the McDonald's there, we get a lot of trash and people coming over to the lake. I mean, it's just, it's a water place in the desert, it's, it's attractive. So we have the potential of more trash in the water, non-residents who really don't care about taking care of the facilities, we have a nice amphitheater there, and playgrounds, and volleyball court. We have had vandalism, we've had littering, people have torn down signs warning not to play in the water or drink the water, because it is gray water. There have been stonework taken off the amphitheater, as well as the seating, negative impacts on the playground, just little damage, and to the volleyball court. And that comes from the HOA fees to correct that. So in summary, I would like to say that I oppose this, not that I'm opposed to McDonald's, but I'm opposed to McDonald's on this site because of the impact it will have on our neighborhood, on our community, and just the overall well-being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the speaker? Commissioner Steiger?
I live pretty close to you, too, there, off of Power and Jermaine. So a couple of questions for you. Number one, what does the word intensity mean to you? And number two, what would you envision as a less intensive use of that site?
I've been trying to think that, because I, I thought that question would come up. Intense to me, think of an anthill, that there's a lot of activity in a very small place, and it's just pretty scattered. And when I saw this sign, I went to the McDonald's at, I think it's Queen Creek and Power. Very active, and it, it, to me, appears to be a larger site than what we're talking about right here. Very active, very intense, coming and going, and I just didn't feel that that would be a good fit for Higley, which is a busy street to begin with, for the ingress and egress. And I didn't feel it'd be a good fit for our community, which is right there. So because this site is so small, we don't have the luxury of buffering with buildings and, and plants and washes, much as the McDonald's at Power and Queen Creek does. What would I envision for the site? I really don't know. Maybe an interior design shop? There's a lot of growth going on to the south of there, so there will be people who will be needing window treatments, accessories for their homes, something like that where they would come in, spend a little time there, and then go about their business. Not this stuff where you have like a constant circulation, that it's a, it's a, it's a specific building where someone would go to transact a little bit of business. Not something like a Pier 1, because that's an In-N-Out, but it's something like an interior design shop, I could see that. I don't know if it would be a good site for like a dental or a doctor's office, I would imagine it's a little small for that. Those are the, the only things that come immediately to mind.
Excuse me, are there any other questions for the speaker? Okay, seen none, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay. I don't imagine the applicant wishes to make a presentation tonight, I imagine, reserve that right till next, I'm not quite sure who I'm looking at, but I'm looking kind of down that area. Next, okay, sure, next month. All right, Al, is there anything else you wish to say on this? All right. Well, I guess with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. I guess the general thought is to continue this to the next meeting, and is anybody have a different thought than that? Is that okay with folks? All right, then I'm ready for a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve, or we recommend approval of the continuance to next month's meeting.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Chairman Whitman, a second by Commissioner Steiger, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing everybody. Ma'am, if you can make it next month, it'd be great to have you again. If not, we're glad that you were able to speak today, and we'll certainly, those comments will be in the minutes, so we thank you for that. Next, we'll move to agenda item number 16, report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. I'm sure Bridget will speak about the election and other current events, so Bridget, take it away.
I'm actually not going to speak about the election, I'm going to let the vice mayor do that. I'll just say, as I usually try to say on this night while we have a little TV time, is to remember that the Gilbert Farmers Market is open all year long on Saturday mornings. They open earlier in the summertime, so they open about seven. Get down there, it's a great place to go and visit and buy fresh local produce and all kinds of great items and lots of crafts. So if you haven't been down there, go down, take your kids, they have food truck for breakfast, they have all kinds of great things, including usually a petting zoo. So if you bring your kids down there, they get to do that. Animals are welcome, bring your dogs and let them walk, and it's a great place to visit. So get down, down, down to downtown Gilbert.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
I guess I would like to congratulate our new chairwoman, Whitman, and also, I'd also like to thank and acknowledge you for your, your two years of service, for a job well done, and leading us as our fearless leader for the last two years, so.
Well, thank you.
Job well done, chairman.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to agenda item number 17, report from our council liaison, council member, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to echo what Commissioner Bianchi said. Great job for the time you've been the chair, and I look forward to the new chair, Vice Chair Whitman, taking over, and I just, each month I'm here, and I'm always impressed with the questions you ask, the comments you make. We have a great commission, and I thank you for your service to the town of Gilbert. On the 28th of August, we had our voting day for our primary in the state and in the town, and just to remind everybody that the general election will be coincide with the state, and it'll be on November 6, and I think early ballots will be out October 9. So I hope our voter participation goes up from the, I think it was reported around 23% of the eligible voters voted in the primary. So hopefully, in the general, we'll see a much higher percentage. So I encourage everybody in the town to exercise your right and vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Agenda item number eighteen, report from the Planning Development Services Manager on current events. Mr. Kyle?
Chairman Fuller, Planning Commission, just a few things. In August, we issued two-hundred-and-eleven single-family permits, so still a steady number there. One thing I didn't realize, but I saw today, was Williams Field Road is now done from Gilbert Road heading east. That was a county project, but it's finally done and, and improved. Oh, that's right, and the ribbon cutting's tomorrow morning in the Fry's parking lot there, just south of the, southeast of the intersection. November, we'll have the open meeting law training. We reminded of that tonight. And then I would like to thank Chairman Fuller for his, his work as well. It's been a, a great run, and congratulations, new Chair Whitman, and we look forward to